Good morning. Welcome to this February 12th Polk County School Board Work Session. We appreciate your being here this morning. We have just a few technical difficulties to work through and we'll get started in just a minute.
I've never had a working computer for any that opens any of this stuff. And I'm not able to open these attachments today either.
Sometimes I get too many tabs open.
I mean, it's never worked appropriately. No, this is the, this is just opening the attachments in the agenda. Adobe Acrobat is having some complications. Judd, your computer doesn't like to handle this.
Good morning, everyone. I know we're having technical difficulty. We're gonna go ahead and start. Mr. Perron is going to come up first. We're gonna swap items one and two in the interest of our guests that we have with us this morning. Ms. Perron, if you'll introduce our guest and then we'll move forward with the Water Walker.
Good morning. We have Brent Words and David Jiang from Water Walker Investments. They'll come up. About a year or so ago, these gentlemen approached us to look at our short-term investments and to invest those for us. And so we took advantage of that. And one of the services they offered was to look at all of our portfolio investments and to see, you know, does it meet policy? Are we getting rates of return that are industry standard for a school district? So they've been working on that and they have their report. And so we normally do a quarterly investment report, which is on the information. But because they have some information they want to share what they found, I wanted to put it on a workshop. And then there's some issues and some remedies and some things that we're gonna talk about when we're done for this board. So, you know, switch it. Oh, is it older one?
We sent the new one to Judd on his email.
Okay, is he gonna put that on?
Right. Is Judd there? Sorry.
They have the, I think they have the agenda.
Yeah, we have the agenda. Is there, is there a piece of it that maybe you can talk about that's not related to?
Yeah. Says investment options for the 2009 sinking fund is dated February 12, 2019. That's on the title page.
Date of what, I'm sorry?
The date should be February 12, 2019. I think the one that was pulled up here said November 12.
November 12, that's what we had.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Superintendent of Board Members. Thank you very much for having us here today. My name's David Jiang. My colleague here, Brent Words. We're the two partners of Water Walker Investments, your investment consultant. So we're gonna give you a quick executive summary. Like Mr. Perron said, Water Walker was engaged to review the current investment options for entire school district. Right now, the inverted yield curve creates a challenge in locking in longer-term investment rates in today's market. So real quickly, what that means is last, since December 2015, the Federal Reserve Bank has been raising interest rates. Up until December of 18, the markets were expecting the Fed to move at least two more times this year. But with the volatility in today's markets, overnight rates is basically flat. So overnight rates right now at 2.50. The 10-year U.S. Treasury is at 2.67%. That historically is a very narrow spread. So that's why this presentation was put together for you to see what is going on. Right now, your 2009 sinking fund has approximately $10.79 million to invest with additional payments to be made into the sinking fund each year through December of 2024. And then what we're gonna see here is all investment recommendations are gonna be in compliance with the bond indenture and the covenants and the district's investment policy. So you're all covered here.
And so at the closing of the 2009 bond proceeds, the projections on those interest earnings over the course of the life of that debt service sinking fund was approximately $3.75 million. And we recognize that with what's currently invested right now and where it would be, there would be a shortfall. And so what we're trying to do is, you know, essentially mitigate that deficit and work towards accomplishing that. And so with respect to that, with the options that we've laid out, we can, depending on which option that we choose, accomplish by, you know, shortening that deficit by approximately 72%, between 15 and 72%, depending on the option and the timing of putting that into the market. And so the different options that we looked at with respect to the presentation is, you know, to take the earnings or the investment right now of $10.75 million and mitigate, you know, the projections were $3.75 million of earnings over the course of the life of the securities. And with what's earned today, there's approximately $10.75 million that can be invested out until 2024 with additional payments that would occur between each December and would be invested at the rate. So with that, by taking $10.75 million, we looked at four or five different options. And the first option was guaranteed investment contract, which is a guaranteed rate till the time those funds are needed. And right now, those guaranteed investment contracts range between 2.5% and 3%. And that depends on the ratings and the negotiations with the guarantor of that rate. So those additional payments could be made into that investment option and would earn the rate that was negotiated today. We also looked at a forward rate agreement. And given the current market, those forward rate agreements are currently paying 2.52%. When this presentation was put together, it's still gonna be around that same range. We also looked at a five-year time deposit or certificate of deposit in which the district could take advantage of receiving that rate for additional funds put in. And that rate was 2.57%. And we looked at customizing a portfolio and taking a more active role in the management of these funds, given the inversion of the yield curve, taking advantage of the higher rates in the short term. And then as the curve normalizes out, then locking in versus locking in today with the expectation of rates going out. And that blended rate was 2.72%. So with those options, you have a passive approach in the guaranteed investment contract or the forward rate agreement or the certificate of deposit, or you take an active management approach in putting together a customized portfolio and then as the market changes, taking those proceeds and locking them in as rates change. The earnings based on those current rates generate between 2.15 million and 2.56 million over the course of the next five years until 2024. And that takes into consideration those additional payments made each year into the sinking fund. So with those additional earnings on top of the $10.77 million that could be invested today, depending on that option, you would capture about 52 to 72% of the shortfall that would be realized based on what was projected in 2009 on the debt service sinking fund. We put together a customized portfolio that was very conservative. We believe that those rates are very conservative. Also creates a little more liquidity using the short end of the curve versus a time deposit or a guaranteed investment contract. Based on the investment policy that the district has in place, we recommended a 40% allocation to an ultra-short government bond fund, about 25% recommendation to an enhanced cash local government investment pool, and then commercial paper in the constraints of the investment policy and a time deposit, which would have some liquidity at a rate of about 2.6%. And that blended portfolio, as I mentioned, generates a yield of about 2.72%. And it kind of falls in between the highest rate of the guaranteed investment contract and the forward rate agreements. So based on that, our recommendations would be to, obviously, if you can take a passive approach and lock in a rate that you're comfortable with, take advantage of that. And so the initial recommendation is if the 3% rate could be acquired on a guaranteed investment contract, that would be our recommended approach for the district. And all the dollars that would be put into that would earn that 3%. Again, that's a negotiated rate. And it also depends on the rate requirements of the underlying GIC provider. So the 3% is on the high end of the range. As I mentioned before, 240, 250 was on the lower end of the range. If that rate is unattainable and to meet the standards of the district's needs, then our recommendation would be to either utilize, if the district's preference is to utilize a passive approach, take advantage of the certificate of deposit and lock in at a 2.57%. Or take an active approach. And you do run the risk of interest rate risk. With respect to that, that option, however, I believe you'll mitigate that because we believe the curve's gonna normalize. And you're actually being compensated more today on the short end of the curve than you are on the long end of the curve currently. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you would have. And again, sorry that you're not able to see the slides related to this.
Mr. Wilson? So in your professional opinion, what do you anticipate the Fed doing over the next several years? I mean, it seems like we're gonna continue to see them increase interest rates on their, on the loans they're making. Is that a fair statement? Would you agree with that?
Mr. Wilson, that's a very good statement there. What we think right now is the Fed's gonna be on hold for the rest of the year. They're not gonna raise interest rates. Now, with the volatility in the market, the rest of the world's not doing as well as we are. Our country as a whole is doing okay. But we see some headwinds for our economy coming in 2019. We think in 2020, the Fed may begin to lower interest rates because the economy will not be growing as fast as the market expects. Okay? That's the hard part right now. We look around here in Polk County, restaurants are full, a lot of economic activity, and that is true. But because of the interest rate hikes from December of 2015 to December of 2018, interest rates have risen 225 basis points. That is about as high as the last two tightening cycles by the Fed in 2004 and 1994. So therefore, we think any option is gonna be good for the district. That's what we, that's what we're gonna say, tell you right now. Because the earnings we're getting right now, that's being allocated from the current pooled investment account is roughly 100 and... Yeah, 1.70%. So if we were to increase this anywhere from 257 to 3% range right now, we could lock that in, knowing that interest rates may go lower next year. Now's the time for the board to consider that.
So there is an expectation that the Fed could actually lower interest rates?
Yes, in 2020. Now, with that said, if we were to reach no more trade war talks with China, that the government doesn't shut down again in this Friday, then the economy can keep on rising, okay? Then the Fed may raise rates again, possibly in June. But we think this is the tail end of that cycle of rising interest rates. If anything, we have risk to our economy.
Yeah, and we certainly know that the president is pushing back against raising interest rates, right? So, and he effectively controls the Fed. I think that plays an impact, has an impact on what happens. Would you agree with that? I mean, it's political, but it's reality.
Well, you know, the Fed is supposed to be independent of that. But we've heard stories going back to Ronald Reagan's day where Ronald Reagan called in, at that time Chairman Paul Volcker, and asked him point-blank, "I don't want you to raise interest rates during election year."
Right.
So this is just a little more overt, okay? In the past, it was behind closed doors. But we still feel that the Fed looks at the economy. I have all the confidence, I think the market's has the confidence in Chairman Powell and the rest of the Thoroughbred Market Committee.
And I don't...
Go ahead.
Mr. Perron, do you have thoughts about the recommendation and what you prefer?
No, I wanted to hear from the board. But if the board would like, then the three of us can kind of come up with what that final plan would be. I think the good news is from where we are, as David said, from where we are, where we're gonna go, it's gonna be better than what we're doing right now.
Sure.
Throughout the next five years in terms, and we can lock in and do that. So we, you know, the issue is that we have to make up from 2009 till today as much as we can. And so I think we'll be mitigating that loss, but we'll, with any of the options.
And much of that's not gonna be done by earnings. Much of that's gonna be done by physical payments that we're gonna have to do to make up, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever is there, there's gonna be another, yeah, an additional payment that we did not foresee.
And the 3% is a locked-in rate, if we can get there. I understand it depends on our credit rating, things of that nature.
Well, it depends on the other side of the guarantor. You certainly don't wanna, if that 3% is somebody that is questionable.
Right.
So we also will bring whatever we come to. In the end, we'll bring it to Mike Weiner at Hollander Knight because he has to make sure it matches up to what the, you know, the original 2009 deal had in it, so.
Well, given what I've heard, my opinion is I like the possibility of getting close to the 3% if we can do that. I think that's what, that would be my, that would be my recommendation. And that's just one board member speaking, but that would be what I would recommend.
Okay. Mrs. Fields?
I guess my question is, you were talking about basically managing it yourselves, and that would be the 3%?
That would be the 2.72.
And then the CD is, what's that amount?
The five-year CD rate, when this was put together, was 2.57%. So the rates across the board, forward rate agreement, which is again locking in at the five-year range is 2.52. And then the range for guaranteed investment contract providers is between 2.4 and 3%.
Well, I don't think we need to be passive. I think that we need to maximize whatever we can, in my opinion. But definitely, I don't think we need to be passive. I think there was one of the options that you said, and that's basically do much as nothing. Just let the market do whatever it chooses to do. Is that correct?
Mrs. Fields, you have most of that correct. Passive does not mean that we will just let the market take it the way it is.
Right.
Right now, right now with the rates, if we have the expectation of rates going lower in 2020, we would definitely suggest locking in rates today into a passive strategy at a higher rate, which is the guaranteed investment contract, which is the 3% you see on the second from the right-hand side. That's a passive strategy, guaranteed investment contract. You purchase that contract with a stable insurance provider, with a good credit rating, you can possibly get that 3%, okay? So every investment that you put in between now and the end of December of 2024, you'll get 3%. So even though that's a passive strategy, it's still pretty good. On the far left-hand side, Miss Fields, you mentioned a custom portfolio that we talked about earlier. We actively manage it according to how the market is. So that's an active strategy. But then you're exposed, the school district is exposed to, if rates were to go lower next year, we would not be able to reinvest at higher rates. Right now, it's at 2.72 based upon what we see. Did I answer your question, Miss Fields?
I would have to agree with what Mr. Wilson said. I think that that would be the best approach in looking at that.
Would you come back again once you work together to present what that would look like in the payments? Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Can you, can we make sure we get the thumbs up? Then we'll email it out to the board. Thank you.
This will have a new logo. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
The next one that you see before you is for closed land purchase with Mrs. Sherwood. And she did make it in.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. You gotta switch over.
So where is it? Thank you. Okay, good morning again. You know, the northeast area of the county is really growing. And when you all adopted the five-year capital plan on September 4, 2018, it showed a new high school, a new elementary school, I'm sorry, 23A. So we were in the process of looking for property. We talked to some developers and they have a development east of 27, north of I-4. So we have been working with them for an elementary school site, about 20 acres. This is the summary of the capital improvement program at the bottom that shows northeast Polk new elementary 23A with planning funds coming in in fiscal year 2023. So it'll probably be a 24, 25 opening. The reason we're being proactive because land is really getting scarce in the area and the price is going up as the longer we wait. Here at Del Sol is the development where the property is located. It's a planned development. They will pay their impact fees for single-family homes. And they have 477 single-family homes approved and 236 multifamily. We will give them impact fee credit for multifamily, decreasing our out-of-pocket for the property. The difference, we had two appraisals by 10, 13.14. Anything over $500,000, we have to get two appraisals. We have the Mankusa appraisal that came in at $200,000 per acre and the Wheeler appraisal that came in at $122,000. We have been negotiating with the contract buyers and sellers and we came up with an average cost per acre of $161,250 per acre. Because it's a planned development, the property owners have to pay their own proportionate share for drainage, for maintenance. And instead of paying annually to the organization, we decided to pay them upfront. And we thought that $250,000, so we don't have this bill ever and we don't have to worry about that, would be part of the sale price. It'll be included in that price. But it's not really for the property. It's for the overall participation in the Property Owners Association. So this is what it works out to. It's $161,250 per acre times 20 acres for $3,225,000. We give $250,000 for the perpetual maintenance. That comes out to $3,475,000. We give them impact fee credit for multifamily units, and that's $790,000. So out-of-pocket for the school district would be 2.685. So $2,685,000 for the land costs. Infrastructure in place, which is really a good thing for us. We have county water and county sewer on site. So we don't have to be running a lot of infrastructure. And the development will take our drainage. So we have a 20-acre net usable property. The enrollment relief, when we went out to 2024, it shows that Citrus Ridge will need 833 new seats and Horizon 117. But because Citrus Ridge is a K8, I changed it to the elementary school. So in 2024, we'll have a need in that area for 675 new elementary school seats. This is including Old Davenport at 839. We did include Old Davenport capacity, bringing back to a new elementary school. So the plan is showing a need for a new elementary school at that time in that area. And that's about it.
So Angela was bringing this to the board to see if we, the board wishes for her to move forward with the developers in this area as we're looking. This, and I want to make sure that we didn't hear Citrus Ridge is a K8. It is still gonna be a K8, but there is a growing need for elementary. So this will be an additional elementary going up there. As we all know, that's where the growth is, is right now is with elementary because we have a high school going up as well. So if this is any interest of the board for her to pursue this, then we'll get really into the more details of it at this point. I think she negotiated as far as she could, trying to come in the middle between that acreage is what they were doing. And then if we go move forward, we will actually get more into the details of the pricing and bring in with the attorneys on both sides and everything.
Agreed, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
I have a question. We've talked about this because this is my background, 14 years in real estate. This is really high per acre for that area, for vacant land, commercial vacant land. I see you have two appraisals that are different. Is there any way to get those, can we look at those appraisals?
Certainly, we have them.
Is it what I...
The difference is the higher one took into account their approved development order and they did their comps on commercial and residential. Because that's, right now, the approval on the property allows for a commercial also. So they used those comps and they did not just stay in Polk County. Since the property is in the four corners, they went into Orange Osceola. While the other appraiser looked at it as not having any development order approval, that we would have to obtain development order approval, and they used their comp mainly residential. And that created the difference. Yes, we did have a concern about the $200,000. And I know the county has been looking for property also. So we talked to the county and they're faced with the same thing. The appraisal comes in low, not low, like a billion dollars, and the seller wants a billion and a half. So they're having, they're having a challenging time finding property up there because of, I guess, the scarcity and the need. So we did the best negotiation. The seller wanted us to pay for the roadway and we said no. And so they will cover the cost of the roadway, which is like $350,000, $400,000. So this was the best, working with attorney and their attorney, attorney Sean Parker and their attorney, Burt Allen, to come up with the best deal. And it took a long time. We have been working on this and trying to come up with the best price because we were concerned about the discrepancy between the two appraisals. So we went through, we asked the second appraiser why, and so I read both of them, and that's the difference.
So those will be made available?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cunningham, then, Miss Fields?
Knowing the area up there and the tremendous growth, particularly in the residential area, and then of course, the commercial tracks to keep up, I would support us moving forward with this proposal. I understand there may be concerns about the cost, but I know doing your due diligence, you all have done the best that you can given the factors up there. Number one, the economy has turned around dramatically in the past year. So things are costing more money. Secondly, all of the different discussions you've had between the two prices and why makes sense. This one took into account the commercial, on and on. But in the meantime, challenge every one of you to go up there and start driving around. 547, I mean, Horizons Elementary was named Horizons way back when because you could see the horizon. And now you can see the horizon with buildings and pools and structures and all of that. So we are growing at such leaps and bounds that we really need the help to be able to, you know, put these children that are coming in with these planned developments. And you all recall where we were a year ago. We almost had to turn a developer away in northeast Polk, the first time ever in my tenure on the board because there wasn't seats available in elementary schools. So... So I really appreciate staff's work. I know you are very cautious, Ms. Usher, and do your due diligence. Um, and I know that we definitely need this for our kids in Northeast Polk because we still are a bedroom community, as we all know, for Disney. Um, and drive through Disney sometime, those places are expanding like, like wildfire. So, um, I would like, I too, certainly, anybody that can get the cost down would be appreciated. But if you feel like you've negotiated as best as you can, I would like to see us move forward with this, considering you were able to give credits and all of that to bring the price down to the 2.6 million. Thank you.
Ms. Fields and then Mr. Wilson.
I, I think I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Ms. Cunningham said. In looking at the summary of the capital improvement program, it was budgeted at 3 million. But, and so now we are actually under what was budgeted. And, um, I, I guess my question would be if we don't do anything on this, what is the likelihood of us being able to find property within a reasonable amount of time?
And that is our concern.
Of deadline.
That is our concern because of property, they're, they're buying it up and we don't want them to have the capacity and not the place to put the school.
And then my other question is, do we work hand-in-hand with the county?
We, we do comparison, yes, with, yes, yes, Ms. Fields, yes, we do. We talk to them, we were talking to Wade Allen about, and they're looking for property for their, um, another office up there for some of their infrastructure. And they're being faced with the same issue with the high, the high cost of property.
Okay.
And talking to them.
So I, I would have to agree with Ms. Cunningham.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I can remember talking to Art Erickson, who negotiated the Citrus Ridge property for us and, and hearing him talk about how, uh, how scarce the land was in the, in that area. And this is even closer to Champion's Gate where the growth, the growth is even still greater. And, and Ms. Miller, I hope you can look those over and if you can.
Yeah. No, I mean, it, there is, and Ms. Usher does a great job. We've had this conversation already. Um, I just wanted to take a look at the proposal. I did not realize the difference in appraisal was because it was including. So if we could just have that with the documents, that would be good. Thank you.
And the only other question I would have is to Mrs. Cunningham, is this the best place? I mean, this is your.
Yes, and perfect for the growth. Um, the other thing is on the west side, I don't know how many of you know, we have the land in development, but then we go into the green swamp, which obviously we cannot touch. So we're, if the word is landlocked sort of, kind of, because of the preserve on, on, on the west side of 27 there behind the current industrial areas. So this is a absolutely a great location.
Ms. Forten?
On slide seven, uh, you have Horizon, Citrus Ridge.
And Loffman Oaks, but really because we just did the addition and how we, oh boy, what did I do?
Disco.
What did I do?
It will be primarily for Horizon Elementary and Citrus Ridge.
Okay.
Primarily for those, those schools.
But some Loffman Oaks.
Possibly.
Will those kids and parents have a, the zone for that new school? Would they have a choice to stay at their?
Ms. Forten, that's all, we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll have to work through all that when this school is built and how we'll provide a momentary.
But it won't provide relief.
That's correct. A momentary relief and a momentary growth.
And if I may add, due to the fact that when the overcrowding at Citrus Ridge took place, we did all this. So theoretically, if it was an incoming elementary school at Loffman and it makes sense for them to be at one of the other schools, to me, we'll have all those discussions because it would be crazy to bust them if. Because we had to do this, so now we can move them, yeah. If the parents, sometimes they like them to spend their last year, year at that school before they move on. So I think all of those would be on a case-by-case.
I just didn't see a number on there, so I was.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I mean, if you're looking for consensus, I'm in agreement with it as well.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have on the information topics, what we have is investment and our head start. But before I turn it over, can I get Dr. Yates to come? A lot has happened in the last week that you probably heard about, um, coming down with Common Core.
Oh, yeah.
At, also, you know, we've had, um, things, we're concerned about textbook adoption. So superintendents, we've been talking among each other about what are we doing? Because we're in the middle of textbook adoption right now with everything changing. You're looking at a five-year contract, which is millions of dollars. So, um, I do know the chair sent me a resolution that was by another county and we've all been talking. And there are options that we were working on as well. And Dr. Yates is going to bring that, um, give you an update on where we are with, with the Common Core standards and where we are briefly with what we're going to do with our textbook adoption.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion over some of the executive orders that have gone out. Uh, superintendent and I have talked and been in conversation with other counties about this. Uh, really, I think the message that is really important for us to send out uh, from the district office is that, uh, make sure we're staying steady with our teachers and that the standards are the standards. I know that if I'm a classroom teacher and I hear this, I would get kind of antsy about it. Uh, but the reality of it is, is that we don't have Common Core standards. We have Florida standards. And really, uh, we, we're at a time period within the five-year cycle to actually review them anyway. And I think that's really the flavor and the gist that the governor is going to take on this is that, uh, we're going to review cycle next year with this. Uh, but as, if you've been in education long enough and you realize that sometimes blanket statements are made like that or things are signed. Uh, but it's really not feasible to do a wholesale change of standards on, uh, you know, just on the turnaround time that he was talking about. So I know for, uh, many of the principals that I've talked to and even some teachers that I've talked to, my message has been, you know, just say the course, this will all work out in the end and just keep working day in and day out. I think that you'll see by the summertime, we actually have a conference call tomorrow with the, the DOE about some of this. Uh, but by the summertime, I think we'll get a little more direction with it. But literally, the, the message that we're getting from the DOE at this point is that we'll just go into review cycle next year, which was scheduled to happen anyway, and look to update the standards that, uh, we have in place. Uh, and maybe, um, I think that would be the kind of view that I would be looking at as far as the standards go. Are there any questions on that one?
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so I know we're on a cycle for the textbook adoption. When is that? I understand you're going to go into review next year. So by when do we have to say, boom, we're going to enter into the five-year contract?
Right. So, uh, the three choices that we've narrowed down to are actually sitting on the table now for public review, the, the three publishers.
All right.
And so, um, the word that we've gotten from the DOE or suggestions or things that they're asking for is, um, you know, our districts wanting to go ahead and move forward, which would be an option. Uh, and we would have the publishers actually sign into the agreement uh, any changes that would, uh, be changed in the standards as a result of the executive order or, and/or any, uh, review process that they would then reissue us and update those textbooks. So, uh, we wouldn't be bound by an old standards textbooks if they did, uh, make changes or make edits to it, which I think is a pretty good, uh, way to approach this. Uh, the other way that they've talked about from the DOE is possibly, uh, moving around the adoption cycles, whether we may would look at more languages and CTE next year. A little bit concerned to really look at that approach because, uh, I've seen before where one year we didn't adopt science and it took like eight or 10 years to finally get a new textbook, uh, for our teachers. So, um, I, I look tomorrow to get a little more information and everything that, uh, we get, uh, I promise y'all that we'll get forwarded on to you as we get to each one of these board meetings. But I think, uh, slow-playing it a little bit, if you will, for the next month, just trying to be steady as we are, uh, making sure that whatever textbook we're willing to purchase will be updated, I think is a, a pretty prudent choice at this particular point. And again, if you don't, you run the risk of having a very dated set of materials for your teachers. And if they're agreeing to take and update them based on any standard provisions, then I think that's a pretty good choice.
Ms. Cunningham, I do believe, um, when Dr. Yates and I talked about this last week, um, he started having those conversations with the publishers. Are they willing to do this?
Right.
Which is our option of updating the textbooks as they change. And so far, I'm hearing that they're agreeing to that. So whatever we do, I want to make sure that's in writing. So it doesn't slip by and then they don't agree to. So we, we are having those conversations as well versus putting off our other textbooks because we don't want to run the risk of them being eight years down the road.
Correct.
When they should have been adjusted. I saw Ms. Forten then back to Ms. Reynolds.
Uh, to review, uh, what is exactly up for adoption, math?
Math is on the table right now.
So algebra nation?
All of that would be, whatever we would be using in algebra class, geometry, any of those classes would be on the table right now.
All math is on there.
And those vendors or vendors, publishers, or actually you have that list, Ms. Forten.
Okay.
If you don't, if you're not able to access it, just email me, I'll get you what it is.
All right.
No problem.
Ms. Reynolds?
As these conversations are happening, is this something that we can keep our teachers apprised of? What is going on? I mean, I've gotten several questions from teachers and parents as far as, you know, is this going to change everything I do in my classroom in the next five years? Um, so as far as getting that information to them that it's going to be okay? We're going to figure this out together?
So, but that's my main concern is for, I think, you know, that they would have anxiety over, you know, this wholesale shift. Uh, and I think all of us messaging consistently and the superintendent I've talked about, maybe putting something out, but she wanted to make sure that the board was good with that direction and, uh, then putting out a message of just the, the necessity to stay the course and making sure that day in and day out, um, we're providing that instruction for students.
I just want to make sure they're getting the information firsthand and not through the great front and TV.
We'll get it out as soon as, um, we can. And we'll get Ray Jaquez up and Dr. Bates and I will get that out to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Ms. Forten, then, uh, Mr. Hill, you had your hand.
I just wanted to go back to one of your original statements about our Florida standards not being Common Core.
That we have Florida standards, we didn't adopt Common Core.
Right. I understand, but the, um, general consensus is it, it's still Common Core. Like it just changed a few names of stuff. But, but I think that needs to be on that list that Sarah Beth, because people are anti-C common core, you know, kind of thing. And I, I believe when he came out, he said he was getting rid of the Common Core, didn't he?
That's what he said.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
That's my point.
And we really don't have it. We'll make sure we have.
You know what I'm trying to say there? I hope so.
With that, I think that if we could just do some kind of explanation for that, because I was in a state meeting and a DOE person was sitting across from me when that came out on our phones. And I said, we're not doing, you know, he just said no more Common Core. And her first reaction was, of course, we don't have Common Core. But the, but the parent, the parents, you know, they don't understand the difference, even though it's very, it's a very similar, um, looking. But we should probably explain Florida standard, you know, what a Florida, what we, we are adopting, we have adopted Florida standards. This may change, you know, without linking it to that title.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it could go politically either way. We could change it all because it's not Common Core or it could look totally different.
Yes, ma'am.
The message that I'm hearing and what we discussed was when we're saying hold the course, we're going to hold the course on our standards.
Right. And which are, okay.
Which are right. Good point.
Yeah, make sure that message comes.
Yeah.
And in statute, we would be reviewing them next year as a normal cycle, every five years.
Next year.
Are you involved?
Just stately. Yeah, and we have actually, uh, some of our teachers and staff participate in those viewed, uh, cycles and have been invited to continue to participate in them.
Ms. Forten?
That was my question.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hill, I'll start.
Uh, Ms. Bird and Dr. Rex covered.
Okay. And I know that wasn't an agenda item, but so much has happened since you posted the agenda and I thought we need to make sure that we got in front of y'all and updated you on where we were going and what we were going to be doing. And we'll keep, make sure we continue that update as things are, um, are changing and happening every week. So I wanted to make sure Doc Yates got in front of you with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that concludes all of our, um, session.
Okay.
I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So the first item of business for the board is master board training. We need to talk about that. Uh, Mrs. Worthington provided some dates for our first session and we need to, uh, get with her and let her know what, what, uh, what day the board would like to choose among those dates we provided or perhaps something else. But we'll start with those dates. Uh, and then the second thing we need to do is figure out what modules that we would like to, you know, that we'd like to have them work with us on. And, and Mrs. Worthington, how many modules do we get to choose?
Five. We get to choose three.
We get to choose three modules out of the five available, okay. So is the, is the first one typically kind of an overview? Is that what you, you're understanding? And, uh, Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
And Ms. Fields, y'all have done this a couple of times. What, is that typically the way it works? The first, the first one's kind of an introduction, the first day?
The way it typically works, my understanding, is that it's done with other school, school districts. And then once we go through that, uh, step, then we start having our individual.
Breakout sessions.
Sessions here. That's my understanding.
So the first, so the first day is, is actually controlled by Florida school boards? They determine that, okay.
That's the typical way, but we were trying to, um, uh, to fast-forward the part about the board role and responsibilities because that's what I understood and that's what I presented, that we needed to focus on that initially. And, and from my understanding, that's what these days support. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're doing it a little bit differently than typically would be done. And then after we do that, then we would go to the, to the group with the other school board members.
Okay. And so, uh, Ms. Fields, based on what you've just said, are, do you, are there some modules in here that, that you would suggest that we do or?
I would say building board protocols.
Okay.
The 2017, 2018.
So is that a full day? Is that a full-day session then? Or do we need to choose another one for that day?
I believe it's like three or, three or four hours. My members are.
Half-day? So we, we probably want to recommend a couple of these then for that first day since we're doing it a little out-of-sequence. Um, and what I'm hearing from Mrs. Fields is that building board protocols would be one of them. Uh, what would we like to add to the second part of the day? Yes, ma'am?
Building blocks to effective communication.
Building blocks to effective communication. Are we, are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mrs. Worthington, we, it appears that what we want to do is building board protocols first and then building blocks to effective communication. If we can work that out with the Florida School Board Association. On a, and that would be in our first session. And then the next question then is, when do we, when do we want that first session, what date?
I am not available on the 19th. The other two I can do anytime.
What were the dates again? I put them in my calendar and I can't find them.
The 19th, the 26th, and the 27th.
I have school visits the 19th, the 26th, we're here all day with work session and school board meetings.
The 20th, the 27th?
The 27th is a Wednesday.
Yes.
So can we do the 27?
I'm gone, the 27th.
Okay.
Could we do that morning, the 26th, before the school board meeting?
I think that's what they say, AM.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
Your idea.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So just do the.
Just do the one session?
Just do the one session that morning.
Okay. Are we, are we good with that? Everybody on board with that?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, for February 26th, in the morning, just the one session, which is, and Ms. Fields, could you give us that session again, please?
The protocol.
Protocols. Okay. So are we good with that? Everybody okay?
And what time, are you going to get back to us?
Nine, probably.
I want you to find out how, how, how long?
Yeah, she's going to have to check because.
Check with them. Okay.
I suspect it's going to be eight or 8:30 because I'm not sure we'll be able to start at nine.
Right.
I would say probably eight-thirty.
Yeah. Okay.
Also, Mr. Wilson, I believe there's a signature required of all the board members that needs to be signed before everybody leaves today, unless they're present.
Yes. Yeah, so, thank you, Ms. Fields. So, yo, if you don't mind, please visit Mrs. Worbington, we'll have a document everyone needs to sign before you leave today. Mrs. Worbington, is there anything else? Okay. Did we miss anything as it relates to that? Alright, the next order of business is exceptional student education, and I think, Mrs. Miller, I think this was your item?
Yeah, I had included a couple of documents, but, and then I asked Susan to send them out via email, because the links were easier. We've had an advisory around for probably, it was probably back in 2010, and it's been, it's been very active, and then we had a transition where it wasn't so active, and so going around the state and looking what other counties or districts are doing, in order to maintain that process and have that public input, and I included that in the link, that many of them have moved it under their board, so that person, either a staff person or the chair of the advisory would report back to the board on whatever they were working on for that session, for that quarter. Each district does it differently. Hillsborough County, they kinda put it under the superintendent, and I shared those links with you. So my suggestion is that we move the advisory, exceptional student education advisory of Polk County, under the board to act as a reporting group of district staff members, community members, and agencies that are working together on policy and/or things that affect the students under the EFC label.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have such a thing, I don't recall anyone reporting to us, it usually all goes through staff, so that's my concern. Would it be able to go through?
Yeah, it would be a staff member reporting, it probably would be Dr. Stanky reporting.
Reporting then through?
To the board, yes, because she would sit on the, she would be on, probably act as chair or co-chair of that advisory.
That advisory, and that would then go through superintendent, not report to the board?
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, we can, one of the things we can do is we can set up, we can have periodic meetings.
Yeah, 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 and reports, yes, yes.
Thank you.
You may be covering one.
So, I, I know they had a meeting recently, and Dr. Aix, currently the way they have it structured now, it sits in academics, under Dr. Aix, which Dr. Stanky reports under Dr. Aix, and she is the liaison for the superintendent under that. And I did speak to a couple of counties, my former county I came from, because it sits in underneath Fiddler's, which reports to the superintendent, but they should be reporting out to the board members. There should be a quarterly report, so I know that they're working on their bylaws about that, and in the bylaws, it does state that there should be a report coming to the school board members about the work. Some of the things that's gonna be there could be items that could be voted on by you all when they're working, because they're gonna take information to them and also bring information back. So I know that Dr. Aix and Dr. Stanky were at the meeting, so if they wanna give any input or any further discussion to this one.
Yes, ma'am. I, Dr. Stanky had actually put together a compilation of the way that other counties had situated the advisory council, and the majority of them were not up under the school board, with only a couple of them being that way of the ones that we looked at. Dr. Stanky, you have that information together?
I do.
Okay. How many were up under the board?
There's only two districts that, out of the 13 that I've looked at, that have it actually as a board policy, where it's a board-directed group, but the majority of, all the rest of them have it where it's under the, either the superintendent's designee authority, or the actual ESE department runs it. And in talking with my large district colleagues, very large district colleagues, and the majority of them, they all pretty much set it up the same, it's like Lisa said, it's a group of parents, district staff, community agency, community members come together, provide advisement, talk about issues, make recommendations, and then they report back through their superintendent to the board. So I think, I think the structure's pretty much the same, it's just, do they go through the superintendent or?
So I think that, just a question that I might would have would be, if Ms. Miller could kinda share with me the, what's facilitating, or what do we need to change based on the current structure that you like more, better, or different?
I think we need to change only because, to be very frank, it disappeared for several years, until it was a few people that, you know, would keep bringing it back. There's no, if it's not, if there's no structure to it, Orange County's is not doing well. If it's, you know, I've been, it's reported that it might, it's not, pretty much non-existent at this point, and that's because it wasn't facilitated. You know, it needs to be something that if I disappear, or if Dr. Stanky wins the lottery and moves away, that will still be, you know, a legitimate source of community input and feedback with those agencies. We've had two large groups kind of under that advisory that were very helpful to transition, that have faded away over time because there was no accountability measure to it. We no longer have those businesses working with us closely to help move our students into transition and employment opportunities. So the counties that are doing it, like Collier, and the ones that are, that have a quarterly report back to the board, it's just a way to legitimize the advisory and to sustain it, because it could easily, it could easily drop off any time, which, which happens, and it's unfortunate, people, you know, shift roles, or it no longer becomes a priority for some. So that's why the ones that have moved it, I think there's two others that I'll have to share that are under the board. They do that to have it sustainable.
So, I think, whenever we were at the last meeting, and I think, I think you were there for a while, if I remember right, at the end of the meeting, we actually talked about the bylaws and what their take and desire was as a group, or as, you know, because it was on the agenda there at the end. So we talked to the advisory council then about, you know, what was the desire, what did they wanna do? Because it is a group of community members, a group of parents, and we had this very discussion, and what they talked about was that they wanted to be able to have more awareness with the school board. So, and so my question to them was, well, are you saying you want school board members on the advisory, or you're saying that you want to be reporting to the advisory? And then in the discussion back and forth, it was almost as if they wanted the school, you know, multiple school board members to be attending, and, and because of awareness, and I, I think that that was one of the key pieces, that they felt like sometimes the school board was not aware of the critical needs of some of our students. And so back and forth, we discussed it, and the concern that, you know, I had, and I expressed with them, I said, "Well, you know, we can damn sure facilitate having a report to the school board, that, that should be done, absolutely." Biannual, we talked about that, and Mr. Hill even said, "Yeah, I can make sure that it gets on the agenda." The concern that we would have would be if two or more school board members were there, then we have an issue with sunshine laws, and also needing to be able to post it and advertise it, which is a different format to me. So I would be a little bit concerned that if we had multiple school board members there, that we would be, in essence, shaping policy at a meeting, not really focusing on the needs of the student. That would be a piece that I would be concerned about. Yes, ma'am?
Let me, if I could just very quickly.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify something, I don't, I didn't understand school boards would be attending these, they don't in other districts, school board members don't attend these meetings. I just have in the past, because if I didn't, there would be no meetings. And so I really need to, it needs to go on to its own, and survive on its own. I need to be sitting as a board member and not in that setting, but it needs to be reported to the board, so all of us are aware of that, and of what's going on with that, that population.
So, I now, I guess I understand a little bit of your anxiety over the situation, and I think that, I think being able to communicate that sometimes is really, really important. And I can assure you that both myself and Dr. Stanky are very keyed into that piece to make sure that we continue that group to meet, and that we hear from the parents, because the parents that are there are the ones that have some needs and have a bigger picture in mind for our students with disabilities.
And I don't want to get lost with on parents, we have lost about 28 agencies and community members because it was not formed. This isn't a, it's not a parent feedback group, it's really a working group, and we have lost a lot of the business contacts we've had in the past. We had a very strong advisory that we worked closely with, Greta Dupree with Publix was part of the business advisory, Lowe's was there, it was really a great arms length into building employment relationships, and that no longer exists. This should not be a parent support group of any kind.
So when I'm looking at the actual bylaws, though, that's not what the purpose is?
It's a purpose to have them in front of me, and this is from 2013, so you might, I don't know what you're looking at.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, these are previous bylaws that, that were worked out with Nancy Walcock, and it's a group of pay, all stakeholders, which include parents, agencies, and district staff, and to increase knowledge of exceptional education stakeholder groups, so it includes all stakeholder groups that have knowledge to be shared via presentations on training in our classrooms or website information to promote greater awareness, to advocate for funding, to facilitate school-based trainings, to collaborate with, to collaborate with other departments of the school board, and to provide an annual executive summary. All of those groups work together, and that's what we did in the past, it was very successful. What I'm saying is, I would just like it to be sustainable, and you can decide however you feel it would be sustainable.
Okay. And I appreciate you pulling that out, but again, I think that making sure that we better legitimize it by having, you know, biannual reports to the school board, also making sure that we do a better job on the invites. I think that there was some back and forth over how to facilitate that, and I'm a firm believer, we can post it, but we need to be emailing and contacting directly and confirming those, and we can work on that, and that point's well taken. I think that one of the things that we talked about, that we would put on the agenda for the next meeting, was actually doing some formal election of the seats on there for the chairperson, and it actually is spelled out in there how we would do that, so we could follow that. And if it is the desire of superintendent and the school board, then I could bring that report back to y'all. And I tell you, what I think, and this is what I told them, I said, "It's not me reporting to the board, it's actually you reporting to the board, we're here to help you with it." But I think it, to me, then it legitimized it, when you have that chairperson who is a parent, as it states there, reporting, then I think it legitimized the process.
I see some hands, some of them, Ms. Fields, Ms. Reynolds, then Mr. Wilson.
I was just gonna say, it appears that they're trying to revitalize the ESE Advisory Council, and it appears to me that what needs to happen is the superintendent ultimately needs to be held accountable and make sure that, make sure that whatever bylaws are in place are being adhered to, and that this is actively being done, and reports are brought back to the board to make us aware and keep us aware of the needs. But right now, I think we need to give an opportunity to get revitalized, as you guys are working on, and then maybe within the next three to four months, they can come and report back, let us know where they are, and then maybe this can be revisited.
I think my question originally was whether this would be better suited to be under the superintendent, which I think it's very similar to how Head Start does their reports, where they have their advisory team. We get a report from them, I think, every month?
Every month.
If not, I think every month. But there's always an information item, so if we, you know, if we can have an information item for it, but I think it's best suited as one of our academic committees under the superintendent, where she can be fully responsible for it.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I think about it from a more practical, practical perspective. If they report, and Mr. Bridges weigh in on this, if I, if I'm out of line here, but if they report to the superintendent, they can make recommendations to the superintendent, that doesn't create any sunshine law violations. If they're reporting to the board and they, they make recommendations to the board, then there could be sunshine law concerns, and, and that opens all of those members up to, you know, to the legalities of the sunshine law, so I'm, I'm a little reluctant to put them in that position.
You can, you can accomplish the same thing several different ways, you know, and there's no, there's no right way or wrong way. But if you have a committee that reports to the board that does anything more than fact-finding, it must operate in the sunshine, must be noticed, must be open to the public, must have minutes, must, must do all those things, just like an elected board. I think most, most districts have a limited number, if they have any committees that report directly to the board, it would be a limited number, most of them will report to the superintendent, then the superintendent reports up to the board. It gives you, it gives the committee what in the military we would refer to as maneuver. Gives them the ability to, to move quickly, change directions, do things as needed without, without all of the delays that go along with notices and publication for sunshine meetings. You know, there's no, there's no hide the pea there, superintendent's got all kinds of committees that do all kinds of things, report up to her, and then she reports up to you.
And, and it sounds like, and I think what I'm hearing is that it's just, it's important that we improve that communication, and I think, have we addressed that?
I think so.
Okay.
So whatever the formality is of the bylaws, they need to be changed, and they're gonna need guidance on this, because right now, it's, I think it's heavily parent involved and district staff involved, so it would be someone suggesting that when they build whatever the bylaws will look like, that would include that piece.
Ms. Miller, I know ESE is dear to your heart, so we have actually, it sits up on the Doc Bates, and we've been talking to various people, and, and we have some things that work on ESE that we'll be bringing forward with you, make sure that we're doing what we need to do for our students, and we have been looking at, and the first thing I said, I've already highlighted some things, we need to address some of the things within the bylaws, and that's what they're doing, not from me, but they're gonna take it back.
Right.
To the committee where they're addressed at, so we did notice that once we received the bylaws.
I just, and this is, these are bylaws from 2013 that were created and approved at the time, of course, they can be changed. I just wanna make it sustainable, I am not, I'm no longer working in an advocate role in being involved in that advisory, and if, if there wasn't a sustainable feature for it, it would disappear. And so you've had some parents come up that have, you know, that are getting trained, but more than that, I'm concerned with the agency loss, and I wanna bring all of those people back into the room. Because I think in doing that, it would, it would bring us, you know, more ideas for long-term solutions, and then my role is, is, you know, in a different capacity at this time. So I don't know if what we need to do to, if it just needs to be in the bylaws, it would be reporting to the superintendent, but whatever changes are made could go through Dr. Aix.
Okay.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is our, our regular routine board comments. So if anyone has any comments they'd like to make, I open the floor. Yes, ma'am?
Just wanna take a moment, last weekend, the last week, we had an event, a Polk Museum of Art event, and from what I understood from Susan, none of the board members could make it, which is understandable. This is an insane time of year, and I just wanna do a shout-out to Mr. Hill for being so gracious and being able to stand in for the board at an event that is very, very important to children today. And I didn't expect anybody to come forward, you know, but you did, and I just wanna say thank you, because I know it makes all the difference when someone from staff is there to recognize these kids and what they're doing, because none of the seven of us could break free from what we were doing to be able to attend. So thank you so much for representing our district so well.
Absolutely, my privilege. They, it was a wonderful, amazing event, just absolutely remarkable, young people, great instructors, great leadership, wonderful night, Polk Museum, what they do for us is amazing.
It is amazing. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I was at the Florida School Board Association finance thing, was the reason I could not go, and I appreciate, because my name was attached to that at one point in time, and realized I'd double booked. So thank you, Mr..
Which we all do.
Yeah, I also wanna thank Mr. Wilson for appointing me to the Orlando Committee. That drive yesterday was.
Are you right there?
Well, when I walked in and saw him, I was really happy to see a friendly face, because I felt like I'd been on a boom, boom.
He also, friendly reminder is coming from Osceola County, so he's a little bit closer to the meeting.
That's why he represents me.
That's why he gets there first.
Okay.
I got through the site, you see.
I love it. Yeah, but it was interesting meeting, and I looked, and they do forward all of y'all the stuff, so I won't bother you with the details, but anyways, I do have a few things still that I'm trying to work out. Roundup is still being used on our campuses, and as a science teacher, I don't use it in my yard, so I really don't think it's appropriate to use around elementary school kids especially. And actually, on January 24th, 2019, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission suspended herbicide use, and that includes Roundup. And I've sent staff the concern from our citizens about that, and I just would like for something to be decided. You can use vinegar, you know?
And water, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's a combination.
There's all kinds of alternatives, yes, but, and Roundup is expensive, you know, that's another thing, so. Speaking of Concerned Citizens, I have been involved, and I know some of other folks have been to these meetings in Warner Haven for the Concerned Citizens Group, and they would like somebody to eventually address the lack of neighborhood schools in Florence Villa. Kids being bused away from neighborhoods decreases community involvement. Except, they drive right by Jewett to go to maybe Stan Ball or Westwood, you know? So that is a concern from the leadership for the Concerned Citizens. So that is a concern from the leadership for the Concerned Citizens, as Mr. John Ruff would be the contact person on that. There's also a concern that's been shared with me about the, and I've tried, I don't really know. But I went back to September when I was not a member of the board. And the planning on Phase Two of Bartow High School was then at 2025, that would be the original planning. Was that pushed back?
So can I, can I trust?
Please.
So there's gonna be some revisions that Ms. Usher's actually gonna bring back.
Okay.
So in the original capital, it was pushed to that, but because we're trying to get up Mulberry and the new high school and elementary school. But she's bringing the readjustments now that we've gotten through the renewal and everything. And she's bringing that, where that's going, I believe it's coming up to, I wanna say 2021. And not 2020 for Phase Two. So we can get Mulberry in there. But that's coming, she'll bring back those revisions to the capital plan to you on that one. Okay?
And I, I came up with a question based on our meeting yesterday. There was a presentation there. Do we have policy and procedure in place for our gay straight alliance clubs in Polk County? Our GSA's? I know Auburndale High School has one.
We, yeah, we started one a couple of years ago. And we, we use the framework that exists and we're very successful with it. So certainly.
It was brought up yesterday is the reason I.
So I know we've been working on something with Jim Maxwell's office and Dr. Stanky can talk about, that they've gone to the conferences and they started, I believe, we even started training with the social, not counselor.
Student services.
Yeah, student services.
School counselors, social workers, psychologists.
So there is policy and procedure in place?
There's some guidelines. There's not necessarily specifically a policy, but there are some guidance. And we, pretty much if a school wants to start one of those clubs, we, they can just call Jim's team and they'll walk them through the process.
Okay. And I'm glad you're talking now, because you're my next thing. So, awesome. All my school visits, every single school, every single person in those schools are telling me that we need E S C supports. And I know, we all know that, but I just wanna put it out there. I mean, it's like every, that's the first thing out of their mouth. And it is really driving away a lot of our good teachers, you know, they still feel supported, yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Fortin, I tell you, that's been a conversation that we have been having among superintendents as well. What's happening there? How are we, how are we addressing some of that? We, we started putting mechanisms in place here as we're talking to some of our surrounding counties. So that's just not something that's just in Polk, and we're all having a conversation. And, and we do make sure, we try to support the principals, and we're hearing some of their concerns. And we're, that's something we talk about every Monday, E S C support.
Right. And still, I don't have the bulleted transportation thing that we asked for about to communicate with the public. I did not get an email on that. Remember, we were supposed to have some sort of.
The quick points?
Yeah, something like that.
They're on the website, you can hit the link.
There is, okay. I didn't get it, okay.
Well, she'll send that.
And then something I learned at the finance thing, and I don't wanna take up everybody's time, but, and we may already have this in place, because I'm not an expert on charter schools. But the Hillsborough County CFO did our training, Gretchen, she was really good. And they had an issue with a charter school over there that I guess went defunct or something. And I asked specifically what we would look for in charter applications to help us avoid that. And she said in hindsight, they would have made the contracts contain monthly budget statements and all minute meetings, meeting minutes to avoid issues that they experienced. She said that would be something that they would now require.
When their board meets, the charter?
Yes. And I thought that interesting, because they said if they'd had that, they might have, could have either helped them or avoided all those kids being displaced back into, because what started it was, we lose money then obviously on that.
So she was suggesting that when the charter board meets, they send their monthly statements to the board from here?
Or to the, not the board.
To the charter office.
To the, yeah, we have a charter office, okay, gotcha. So that, yeah.
They can keep it on record, then they can read here.
Because they really did not have any way to track what had happened. And so they started getting calls from vendors, is how it was explained to me. And then they're like, oh, ooh, ooh. Even though they weren't responsible for them, kind of, yes, ma'am, oh, sorry. Ms. Fields?
Now, it used to be we would periodically do site visits at the charter schools. And the budget part was a piece of the visit. Now, I don't know how we do that, Ms. J. But I would think there would be some type of financial statements that have to be periodically given to us.
That is, Ms. Fields, that is correct. We still do that. We also get statements, financial statements throughout the year. But one thing that we have not asked for.
Is the minutes.
I just want, you know, wanted to put it out there in the universe.
Thank you. If I might, one of, Jason knows this, one of the emphasis now of the A I C P A and the auditing groups that oversee audits is, is a focus on liquidity. And ensuring that, that organizations have appropriate liquidity, it's a huge emphasis on auditing now. So I think to some extent, that probably being more addressed better at the audit level. So you get their audits that, do you, as you, and I'm sure you look through them, and especially those that are liquidity. That would be, because the auditors are gonna be most likely to dig that out, I would think.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, great idea. I'm not suggesting we not, not do that, but. It would be, I think it would be helpful also if we were very careful in reviewing those audits.
And I have visited like a ton of schools and mostly elementary, since that's where I'm lacking in prior knowledge. You know, mostly secondary. And all the schools I've been to, Sykes, Purcell, Highland City, they do not have a buzz in at those schools, like the Single Point buzz in. And that, they're pretty open. A nice one to kinda, even Mulberry Middle School, as new as it is, doesn't have a buzz, like, at all. And that's, I just wanted to put that out again. I would love for, you know, and it's those kind of things that kinda make you feel, you know? Highland City has like a little tiny fence.
We got this this week from Ms. Usher that talks about the expansiveness of that list for the summer. And it was, what they're likely to work on, so.
I just want, since they're my little area, I just wanna make sure they're okay.
So, and, and our plan, a few months ago, when the board, they brought back to the board of, as far as the layout of what they're doing to improve some of the structures, the buildings, a lot of those things were included. And some things they added and extended the list a little bit more. Because of, as they're going around now, some additional things they're adding to that. But they got a lot of work ahead of them that they're gonna be embarking on during the summer. And we've been talking about that, because when we're talking about summer sites, they have to get into the work as well. So we're trying to make sure.
Would that include cameras at Spencer Holland? Because they don't have any cameras.
I think if, not to kinda get too detailed, in that list, it was a full looking at the infrastructure of schools.
Where would I find that?
We can, we can get with you. Ms. Usher, we can get with you on that.
And questions about security specific schools, might be best to either run straight through the superintendent or with the Office of Safe Schools, because much of the information about that is, is confidential and should not be released.
All right. And, well, I'm still not giving up on the social worker and mental health professional at every school. So that is my goal, I'll say it every time.
So, Mr. Chair, we, we looked at that, and we did a cost analysis to that. So for a hundred, help me if I'm, I get it right, for a hundred and one social workers, that would be at a hundred and twenty-four. Mental health, add a price tag of so far fourteen point five million.
And that's recurring costs?
Yes, it is. So if the board would like us to.
Does that include benefits?
That's benefits and everything. Yes, it does. So it's at fourteen point five million. And if the board wants us to pursue that, at this time, we just need direction.
Some work with.
Well, I mean, we do have.
There are other ways.
Yeah, there is multiple way. Like, I think Jim Maxwell would be a great resource to talk about what we currently have.
I'm meeting with him, but I've had great ideas of how like, in order to condense that, you have like a social worker that basically follows up the kid. Therefore, instead of just one per school, you could have one for the main elementary school, the middle school, and the high school that kinda works just in that educational track, you know, and that reduces the number you need.
I know Kimberly wants to say something, because we also have positions right now that we have not filled with mental health. Um, excuse me, mental health, how many do we have that we've been trying to fill?
There are currently twenty-four open positions in the state. Less than of them are currently advertised on R H S.
Okay.
So remember, that was because of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act and because of that. So we did get a small, small appropriation from the state for that. However, it does not cover the cost of the entire program.
But Dr. Stanky, did you wanna weigh in on any of that?
We did, and part of the preliminary analysis of looking at things, we looked at, you know, we have a school counselor in every school. We also have the twenty-one social workers that we have and the forty, fifty-two school psychologists that we have are able to provide those follow-up wraparound services, counseling, all those types of things. So it's not always that it has to be directly a social worker or a mental health, licensed mental health counselor. So we look at that and we look at those types of services that we're providing. Like Tedra said, the twenty-one mental health counselors that were coming from the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas money, there's twenty-one of those positions, they've been advertised. We have had a lot of applicants that applied, but we're still filtering through them to determine how many of them are actually qualified. But what's happening is that a lot of the people that are applying for those positions are either our school, current school counselors or our current social workers, because they qualify for the positions. So what we're having is a lot of the same people wanting a lot of the same positions. The other thing is the way we structure those twenty-one positions is very similar to what you just said. Each one of them, they're district-based, they would have a select group of schools that they would support and facilitate exactly what you said, follow-up on case management of those, of students and, and those types of things. So it's really just a structure, a question of what structure do you wanna have? Do you wanna have somebody on every single campus in a dedicated role that does a dedicated job title?
If I had a wand, yes.
Or, you know, yeah, it just kinda depends. But to add.
Now, the school psychiatry, psychologists, I've, I've talked to them too, and, and they seem to be bogged down with just like testing paperwork and, like, they don't have time to do the things that we expect them to do.
Many of them are bogged down with a lot of paperwork, but what, our testing evaluations. But we're also finding out that the more opportunities we have to provide upfront work with schools on what the M T S S process is, working with behavior, really identifying interventions and things with kids, which those types of service providers do, then the less evaluations that they have to do. Because the ones they are doing are more appropriate to what needs to be, be done. So it's kind of a give and a take.
I think, Ms. Kevzola, did you have some comments you'd like to make?
Well, I just, what Ms. Fortini said and, and the issue that we're hearing all the time is the number of things. The psychologists get concerned because they're, many of them, their primary focus is to do testing. And, and there is a strict timeline for the testing. And so they feel very, that they don't have enough time to provide some of the services that they would like to provide. And the guidance counselors end up being a catchall for testing coordination, some L E A pieces, some, you know, H R, you name it. They kind of, because everybody is running ninety to nothing, they, a lot of things end up there. And then they feel they don't have time to do the type of work, the guidance, the counseling portion of their work gets subsumed by many other things. So I know in the past, there've been a couple of legislative bills to try to, to purify, if you will, the guidance position that they haven't passed. But that is, that does become a problem as we seek to have one person where many have.
Yeah.
Right, and like, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think, Stanky had a suggestion, a creative approach to addressing that. And were you in agreement that that, were y'all in agreement that that might help?
Are you talking about like the elementary, middle?
I'm just saying that that's how we, that's how we built the new twenty-one mental health positions. That's currently how our social worker positions are divided up. They have a certain number of schools, and so are the school psychologists. But really, it comes down to resources and where you wanna put your money.
Yeah, and I have some comments about that I'll make in just a moment, but.
I mean, some districts do it, one way, other districts do it another.
I wanna get back to Ms. Fortin, she has some comments, then we'll go to Ms.
Well, back to what was just said, I mean, about guidance counselors, so Highland City has one, and they're the L E A person. Highland City, they're, and they have like seventy I E Ps to write and keep up with. You, you know, that's real work. And that's five hundred and seventy to six hundred kids, Highland City's overcrowded. You know, some schools need to be looked at individually, because they're already struggling. And that's what I think they mean when they say E S C support. That's just my opinion, you know? And then I forgot the other one, because I'm old. I'll, I'll think of that.
Ms. Millen?
I just have a question about the twenty-one mental health. When that first came out, that pay rate is similar to a teacher? So my fear was we would have teacher, not fear, but my concern was teachers would want, we would lose good teachers into those roles because that pay rate, we can't, I mean, when I hear mental health support or first responder to mental health, I would assume that would take more like qualifications or degrees. I didn't realize that pay rate was the same. So is that an issue with trying to get applicants for the mental health responders?
We did a higher, it's an eleven-month position.
Okay.
And so it's a higher than a first year.
But their requirements over being?
They have, well, it's the same, they have to have, either be a social worker, psychologist, any of those positions needed. And then they have to have the licensed mental health licensure.
Okay.
But you know, it's different, the certification.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fields?
I think maybe three or four months ago, Mr. Maxwell came and brought his team. And I think it made it be a good idea for him to come again with an update, especially for the new board members, to get some of the same information that we received. And then I just wanted to make an announcement that I am having my second evening of listening town hall meeting on next Tuesday at Sleepy Hill Middle School. And I'm gonna be doing this in conjunction with Dr. Kate Blackburn. And it's gonna be from six thirty to eight P M. So we want him to make sure. And this is specifically targeting our parents coming out and sharing their concerns, so whatever their questions may be. So this is the second one that we're doing, and we're gonna continue to do it throughout the, the area so that we can listen to what their concerns are. And, and we're working on, on our first town hall meeting responses, getting feedback from staff. And we're gonna be releasing that very soon as well. But just wanted to make you all aware of that and, and hopefully get the word around.
Ms. Fields, Ms. Fields, I'll give you a simple responses on your questions forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other board comments? Well, I'd like to comment about the discussion about our at-risk students and our E S C students. And, and it really goes back to the, the issue with busing as well. And it's, it really comes down to, to finance, the ability to finance those positions and pay an appropriate, a fair, a fair pay to those folks, so that we can track people into those positions. And if you came to our meeting with our legislative delegation, you heard me talk about the, I call the millage rate rollback. What is R L E? The millage rate rollback that we've seen occur over the years. And what I mentioned there was that people, the reason our property values are going up is because people are moving here. They, they wanna come here, they wanna live here, and they need services. And to provide those services, we have to find a way to pay for them. And rolling back the millage rate is disastrous to school districts, and especially to us. I mean, based on information provided by Mr. Pitts, we, if we did not do that, we would be bringing in an extra fifty-five million dollars a year that would be immensely helpful. Would certainly cover all those positions that we were just talking about. And I previously talked about. And I previously talked about lottery fundings, I misspoke about that, and I apologize, really, with the issue that is the FTE. We have not seen any viable over the past decade or so, any viable, a cost of living adjustments in FTE, it's been pretty stagnant, so. If we saw any kind of minimal cost of living adjustment, that would be immensely helpful as well, so I think. Uh, it's disappointing to me that our governor said that we, that we will continue the millage roll- rollback program again this year. I hope we can get that word to to our state legislators somehow, how how damaging that is to our school district. I did meet with a former state legislator, somebody who's very influential in in Tallahassee and. And made that, uh, uh, ma- made that, what's what I'm looking for? Shared that information with with this person, and it, they were really quite shocked, I don't think they realized we were doing that. And I had, I talked to another former state legislator, said, did I pass that when I told them about it? Uh, they were a little surprised to know that we were doing that, so, um, we just need to keep getting that word out, I think. And the last thing, and the other thing I wanted to mention, I wanna talk about our, we call, I think we're calling the roundtable discussions, we have one scheduled at twelve-thirty today. So, I'm a little bit, I'm still a little bit unsure about what we're trying to do with that and how we want to accomplish it, I think originally, the goal was to. Um, allow for additional time for board members to talk about ideas and concepts and things that they wanted to talk about, because oftentimes in the work sessions, we were running out of time. I think that was one of the objectives. The second one was to uh, have those discussions in a little bit more relaxed environment. As it turns out, um, I think we've determined that we still have to have all the resources here, we still have to take the minutes. Uh, we had hoped we could have a little more open dialogue, I think we've accomplished that here in these work sessions. But the problem is with the minutes, if we have two or three people talking simultaneously, then it makes it difficult to keep the minutes, so we still have to have that sense of. Of organization, I'm not sure that we, um. I think, I think we're not, I I'm not sure how we're gonna accomplish that piece of it, I think we can. Uh, continue to have these, and if the board wants to, we'll continue to do it, it, and and allow. An opportunity to folks more, to more fully develop their concerns and questions and things of that nature. The second piece had to do with the involvement of of uh, the community. And I I think what I heard there was two things again, number one, that some members of our community. Were reluctant to come to the school board meeting because it's taped, um, they were a little hesitant to be. You know, I guess, uh, a little concerned about sharing their thoughts in an open environment, this was a little more, a little less open environment, but. Uh, it was brought to my attention, and it occurred to me that we don't, we don't record those. When folks come before the board in the evening and offer their comments, those are not recorded, so those are not, those don't go out over public TV or anything of that nature, so. I I think that's addressed, the other piece of it is providing a little more time, uh, if they, if they, uh. We talked about maybe giving them a little more than the the three minutes, so. But I would offer this, as I lis- as we had the, we did this last time, as I listened. The things that were said after about three minutes just became repetitive, you know, folks just kept kinda saying the same thing, I think sometimes it's human nature. If if I say it enough times, you'll understand it, because the first time I said it, you probably didn't understand it. So, I'm not, I I'd like us to rethink that, or at least have that discussion, and we're gonna have, we can talk about that a little bit more this afternoon, but. We we did not hold one this evening, because I wasn't sure how to move forward with it. Uh, holding them in the evenings requires a difference, additional staff, it requires additional resources, and. If, as we talk through it, that may not be necessary, depending on the goals we want to accomplish, so I wanna, I wanna revisit that a little bit, we can talk about it now. We can wait and talk about it this afternoon, because we do have one scheduled at twelve-thirty.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not staying for the um, roundtable this afternoon, so if I may have my comments now?
Certainly.
Um, my uh, reflection of the initial conversation about the roundtable discussion was to. Help the board members to have an opportunity to get to know each other better, that was my understanding. And in listening to the uh, recording from the first roundtable, uh, to me, it was a lot of discussion that could. Eventually lead into uh, possibly uh, policy-setting measures, and so, uh. Today, it is now about twenty minutes to eleven, and uh, I think this work session was. To go until maybe twelve or twelve-thirty, I think that was an estimated time, I know it's just an estimated time, so to me. What we're doing right now could easily be added time for discussion, and then we wouldn't have to go until twelve-thirty uh, afternoon. That's just my opinion on the matter, so I, I just think that we could better utilize our work session time, we finished up very quickly today. Everything went very smoothly, and then they allowed us the board members an opportunity to have whatever discussions they might have. Uh, without having to go until an afternoon, I think afternoon, twelve-thirty to five-thirty, uh, is what was, again, estimated time. Uh, but that's just my take on it, I remember specifically that it was, and I don't know if I'm the only one that remember. Uh, but that was when Mr. Harris and Ms. Sellers were on the board, I know that Ms. Miller and Ms. Fortney would not have remembered it, but that was. So that the board members could get to know each other in a more comfortable, laid-back setting environment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fields.
Uh, sorry, I also have another commitment this afternoon, so won't be able to attend, but I, kind of off of what Ms. Fields was saying, that's. How it originated, that was my original understanding, was it was a time for us to get to know each other better, because if you don't know each other, it's really hard to work together. You don't understand what makes each other tick, um, and it, from that point, kind of evolved to, we're running into. Four o'clock and we have to go to discipline, but we haven't been able to get to board comments, so we need a little bit of additional time to go to board comments. But these meetings that start at nine A M., we seem to have more time, I think we've talked for forty-five minutes to an hour now about. I think anything anyone wanted to bring up, um, that it, it seems like that can be in the future, just an extension of these meetings. I realize that there will be work sessions where we have six or seven agenda items that will truly take the whole time, but. It just seems like the way that we're structuring it is basically having now a two-hour break to then come back and have board comments again. So, that's, I I would be for just extending the time that we have for board comments at the end of our meeting that doesn't. The meeting that's not, not the school board meeting, the just standalone work session, um, that's once a month.
That's good.
Okay, so, yeah, I kinda agree with both my colleagues, and I see that now at the twelve-thirty. We're gonna be doing board agenda review and all of that, so that normally goes now, that kinda threw me for a loop.
I'm not sure.
It's a special work session?
No, there won't, there's no board agenda review, that's, those are just the headers that are always on there.
Oh, okay.
The school board members to discuss.
Okay, I was like, I thought maybe that's where you were heading with this, so, okay, cause I know there's no board agenda review items tonight.
Correct.
Cause there's no board meeting, I get that, okay, so that was kinda different, and I kind of agree, um, normally, we schedule today's meeting from nine. To whatever, usually twelve, I don't remember what the times are, so let's say we schedule it. Together, nine to two, perhaps, so on days that you're done earlier, you're done earlier, but include the roundtable. As another agenda item, or take a break, I get that, so if there's guests and people that need to leave, they can take a break, whatever, and then come back and say, okay. Now, we're in our roundtable, what do we, what, who would like to go first, or what, and then do that, so that, you know, commitment-wise. You know, I'm here from nine to two, and if we leave at one, we're done at one, if we need more, it gives us a little better adjustment. Thinking, work session nine to twelve, roundtable, twelve-thirty to two maybe, or whatever time you all feel is appropriate. Cause then we could build that into the schedule, like, for Ms. Fields today, just a thought, Ms. Fortney, I don't know.
Well, you know, I really like Ms. Fields's idea of her little uh, town hall things uh, that she's doing, if. You know, I'm gonna try, try something like that, and then, like, bring that information to the roundtable.
There you go.
Because that would eliminate folks having to come and and share, cause they've already shared with me. And that's not a sunshine issue, is it? Okay.
As long as it's you.
As long as it's just you.
And you're doing it in sunshine. Rules.
Not a school board member.
Gotcha, so, you know, that's like maybe something we could talk about in the roundtable, that we can maybe all commit something similar.
Sure.
Something like that, and then as far as Mr. Wilson's comments about folks not being recorded, I don't think that's what they're worried about. They're not worried about being recorded, they're worried about being viewed by uh, folks, like, right in the, in the room, and then retribution. That that's, you know, because history shows that sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the not oil. You with me?
Gets the paddle.
Gets the ax.
Gets the paddle.
You know, I understand.
Gets that other one.
Guess, the question would be, how is that a, how do we?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, I did remember finally, okay, uh, on the finance forum that we went to. Uh, Gretchen had a list of mandates from the state, I don't know how many pages long it was. But she's supposed to be getting that to everybody, she only had one copy from way back, to me, that is an invaluable tool. For to talk with people and be like, you wanna know why we don't have money?
Right.
This, and and it's, it is a master list of every mandate that's ever been forced upon us in such a way.
Do they assign dollar values?
Right, is it funded or unfunded?
It it, unfunded.
Oh.
Yeah, so I'm working with them trying to get that list, it's pretty extensive.
But did they, but did they assign dollar values to the unfunded man?
I, she had it up like this, Mr. Wilson, like, these are the lists, and then she started reading the, you know, whatever, so I just asked for the list.
Okay. That would be incredible.
Yeah, yeah, and then, they did, pardon me?
Look at, um, my finance, Jason and Mike, they know them, so we'll get them in touch, touch with them too, okay.
She, yeah, they're just trying, I think, to put it together, I don't know, but uh, and then they, she also emailed me a, that we can take possibly to Tallahassee. The this discussion was acronyms, that our state legislature, you know, doesn't know many of the acronyms, so. They just don't vote or vote, well, however their buddies do, or kinda thing, because they don't even know what they're voting on, that was discussed. So, she did send me a list of that that I can provide of uh, lingo.
Ms. Reynolds?
I, my question, going back to the roundtable, my question was just what the difference between our board comments? And doing a roundtable after board comments would be, does that make sense?
Well, and that, and that's what I'm trying to understand, so I I think that's a good question, and and it, and basically, what I'm hearing is. The board would like to just extend the regular work session and and allow for extended comments.
I just wasn't sure if there were certain things that were supposed to be reported in board comments, and certain things that we were supposed to talk to in work, the roundtable, or if it was.
No, that, that was the challenge of figuring out where we were, that was really the challenge.
Trying to try and report things at the right time.
Right.
I think, Ms. Miller, did you have?
I just, I think it's a great idea that we're gonna push the time together on these shorter days, but I I understood as a new board member. That it was time to have lengthier conversation on a topic, um, to, you know, expand a topic that you might not do in board comments, you might, you know. So, today, I wanted to talk more about, um, the visits I've had and the transportation thing we're talking about, and the communication piece of it. I probably wouldn't do that in board comments, but I could, um, if you wanted to extend board comments, um, to do that. It was an idea of sitting together, I didn't understand it to be a social event, or to get to know each other, it was to have a longer time to expand on topics. That you might need more information on, or that you wanna ask more questions about, that's what I understood it to be. Um, and it can be done at whatever time, I didn't even expect the public, like, that's not what I intend, that's not what I thought. Um, cause it is odd for to them, for them to get here, the seating isn't, you know, usually, if it's a lot of people in here, it'd be hard to put them here. Um, I thought it was a time for the board members just to sit and talk, to expand on issues, like, I would love to talk about the behavior piece, cause with ESE. Right behind that is behavior, and some of that is locked together, and if we could expand the conversation on what we're doing with that, or what we plan to do with that. Then when in the community, I could take that back if I get questions, it was more that, that's what I was expecting for it, but whatever format is decided.
And I, I understood that too, because sometimes we're so rushed, you know, the three-thirty to four, cause there's discipline and then board meeting.
Right.
And a couple of us have said, wow, I wish I could, I wish we could have more discussion on this, so. I I feel like you, what you just said, I feel the same way, so I'm thinking, it's not necessarily in board comments, we finish this up. The agenda review board comments at eleven o'clock, and then take a break, and then come back and go around the table and say, okay, what's on your mind? What what would you like to bring up, and then we do talk about things, I'm not necessarily thinking it's a board comment time, I I I agree with you. Cause every one of us has things, and then going back to Ms. Fortney's comments regarding town hall meetings. When I get information now, I don't ever bring it back to this group, I go directly to superintendent. So, in other words, if I, I'm out visiting schools and somebody says, hey, and I hear it in more than one place, I sit with her. I've never thought about bringing it in a roundtable discussion, which might be good, because maybe you're hearing the same thing that I'm hearing, and it would lend more credibility. I don't know, but I've never done it that way, cause obviously, we haven't ever had the chance to sit and just talk about those things, so. I'm open to either way, but if we're gonna change the way we do things, I just need to know, cause I normally. Go through superintendent, and then she reaches out to staff and says, could you please, you know, and then I get the answer back, and then I relate it back to the community, so. However we decide, I just wanna be consistent.
Ms. Fields?
I'm just gonna say, I think, uh, what Ms. Miller said is, is a combination of both.
Yeah.
I think that when we initially had the first conversation, it was about getting to know each other, and I think it has evolved into something completely different. So, I think that we're both correct, uh, the idea that Ms. Fortney has about sharing the uh, results from the town hall meeting is absolutely what I plan to do. And thank you, Dr. Ags, and and the staff for giving great responses, and I'm gonna share that with the board as well. Because a lot of the concerns that you guys are hearing are the same concerns that we all are hearing, and so, if we can all work together for the good. Then it makes just good sense for us to do that, uh, I still think that we need to make sure that we include Ms. Byrd, as you just referenced. In whatever we are dealing with, because she is the CEO, and she needs to be averse as well, uh, so.
Very good, so, we could conceivably, so, do we wanna wait till twelve-thirty, have a roundtable, do you wanna, do we wanna do it now?
Yeah, if we do it now, we need a break.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, no, I know, so, uh, are are we in agreement that we'll take a break and then have a roundtable now, do a roundtable now, are we okay with that?
That's fine.
Are you okay with that?
And I can round table until twelve-thirty, and after that, I can't round table anymore.
Okay, so let's take a break, we'll come back, we'll, we'll have a roundtable discussion, and then we'll, we will not.
I know.
Have the twelve-thirty meeting, cancel that.